But we don't vote on anything in a work session. There's no motions before us, there's no decision made in terms of policy. If we don't kind of come to a consensus on it and we need more information, then we can have another work session or find another vehicle to figure out what to do next. So, we did talk about the, although this says rights of way, this was really talked about in the context of, guys, it was talked about in the context of parking in an area between basically Point Judith and Mont Carey's, several streets around there. And we had a, we had a meeting about that, I want to say in early summer, early summertime. And at that time, since that time, we've hired a new town manager. So he's looked at this with a fresh set of eyes. He knew this was something that we had looked at. So I'm going to turn it over to him because he has gone and checked out the area and wanted to see what feedback he has with us. Mr. Tierney?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, coming this evening. I'm Jim Tierney, I'm your new town manager this week. We'll see what goes on from here. Start off with a little levity, folks. This all came to heck a while ago, before I started here. And both the people who live in the neighborhood and the recreational folks in the surfing community have, all have their concerns about this. We wanted to try to address it. We've come up with a few ideas. Some people in the surfing community have come up with a few ideas. So we thought the best way to do it is to bring everyone together and have a mutually respectful conversation without any assumptions about something's being decided without anyone's input, because that's not the case at all. The reason we're having this is to be very transparent, want to hear people's concerns. We had a work session recently on another topic, and it was very informative for both sides. And hopefully this will be the same. One, a couple of things that we came up with down there is, it isn't resident-driven. Some people seem to come to me and I've been saying they feel it's resident-driven. It really isn't. There are some resident complaints about parking using any other neighborhood. It's more public safety-driven. School buses can't make the corners when there's too many cars parked there. The fire trucks, rescues cannot fit through there. So we do want to track down the solution. There was one proposal, or a recommendation submitted to us by a gentleman, I believe who's in the crowd now. They come up with 75 additional spaces in that neighborhood. I have over 28 years of law enforcement experience and five and a half years of transit experience. That's not going to work. That's not an option. It's not safe. Some other alternatives are myself and Mr. DeLuca from Community Development down there. And we checked out the whole area. It's preliminary, but we did come up with an, there are six legal spaces in that area right now. The rest of the zone is no parking. We did come up with some additional spaces, but it's just suggestive now because we still have to check with CRMC if they think it's okay to use that area, and check with some of the affected residents to see if they have a reasonable objection to it. It's not a lot of spots, but we'll discuss that a little bit later. We've also had some options offered to us in the community. Figured out to give you these first before we get into the discussion. The Bond Viewers offered their parking lot during the day, free of charge, if the people using it leave their plates with the establishment. Rose Norman Park, if there's additional parking there. And then hopefully come up with a few more spots in the neighborhood. But I would like to show something first, to show you what I was talking about, public safety-wise. And if you're a surfer, or a fisherman, or a recreationalist down there who climbs on the rocks, if you get hurt, these are the guys who are going to come to help you, and they want to have people to get there. You can see if there were cars parked close to that corner, truck would never be able to make that turn. Those are the rights of way. We don't want them obstructed by any vehicles. The purpose of the right of way is to give everyone access to the shoreline, not vehicles, people. And if someone were to be in a wheelchair, wanted to go to the end and there were four or five cars parked there, so they could sit at the end and watch the surf, they wouldn't be able to do that. That would be a problem. As the fire chief can tell you, if that was a rescue, we backed it there so we could carry the person up. But there's no vehicles parked there, we wouldn't be able to do that. The whole discussion is going to, from my angle, is going to be public safety-driven. But we want to work with people, try to find alternatives for parking in the area that's agreeable to the residents that live there, and allow people access to the shoreline. It's not adversarial with the community and the services. Actually, many people live in there, from what I understand, I've served a couple of people who've talked about. Those are some of the alternatives that we came up with right now. If you want to see the other two videos, we can, but I think you get the point. Some of the alternatives we're working on right now are Rose Norman Park, the Bond View Parking Lot, some additional parking that we're trying to create down here. We're not trying to ignore the requests to modify it. But I also believe some of the areas down there should be a tow zone, because it is an asset. Police can tow it anyway if it's obstructing something, but it should be clear to the people who are down there to choose to park there or no parking zone, it's a tow zone. And I spoke with the police chief and the fire chief, years of public safety experience, road safety assessments, and we, all three of us have the experience to make a decision like this, a good one. Now I want you guys to help us make a better one.
Great. So thank you. So just to follow up, in terms of conversations with Bond View and with, and I don't even know how the permission would work with Newland Park, Newland Park would just essentially advertise it, but what, where are we on those?
Spoke with the owner of the Bond View. He said, he said I can speak on it publicly and make your opinion.
And then in terms of additional parking spots, so we can see from that how narrow the road is. So you're looking at, was your suggestion for additional parking spots? You want to kind of get the feedback first? Okay, let me show the map that we had out in the office today. That's fine. Feel your pain. But there was no sound associated with that, right?
No.
I didn't listen. Actually, no, I mean, maybe I didn't, I didn't, if it was in the silence.
And these are, these are preliminary, like I said, because some of them are very close to wetland areas and CRMC would have to approve it. Already one's been eliminated because it blocks access to someone's right-of-way to get on the property.
Wait, wait, wait. All right, so why don't we, no, we'll do, I'm going to open it up to the council members if they have any preliminary feedback, and then I'm going to open it to the public, just at this point, unless there's any more. All right. So is there anyone from the council? Go ahead, Joe.
No, I'm going to let Jim speak to this, because I do believe it's public safety, but Matt, I want to just suggest, many of these people are not frequent flyers to council meetings. Can you go through the process of how they can come up to speak to the podium?
So everybody, just, we have our podium, we're in a work session. Usually we have the work sessions next door, and so we want people to come up to the microphone when they, when they speak. So right now, I'm just going to see what preliminary feedback from the council is, and if members of the community want to come forward, I'm going to ask you for your name and address, and then, you know, want to address what your concern is and what you think a possible solution would be. All right.
Cheryl, speak. Go ahead. All right, so I guess Jim or Mike DeLuca, we can't really go, I mean, I don't see any sense in going to the public without looking at the map to show what's been worked on, to show the streets. Yeah, can we see the zoomed-in view?
Okay, God, yeah, let's, let's not, like, one at a time. Like, one at a time.
Council president, just briefly. I did this single map. We have, we have maps that are close-up versions of all these. I didn't load them into the PowerPoint, so forgive me. But I will do my best to, to describe what we're looking at, okay? But I did this map purposely so you could see the entire area that's been in question. So...
Mike, can we use a GIS system? Can we just...
I don't think so. I don't think we can connect to the GIS system at the moment. I'd have to load it in.
I think, I think really, if we're looking at, the 18 spots we're looking at, we're probably looking at them on less narrow roads, because the narrower roads, obviously, we're going to have a public safety problem. That's what we saw from the video. So I think, you know, if we're looking at 18 in general, I guess, if we could just, even without the map, basically say, are these on roads perpendicular to essentially the water, or are these, you know, where are these, you know, generally? That's fine. I didn't, I didn't expect a map tonight, it wasn't, so I didn't mean to put anyone on the spot, I'm sorry. So I think it was more conceptual as to what, you know, what we're looking at. So maybe that would be a way to go at it.
I can just give you a brief description of each of the three locations. So we went up there and we walked the sites from Nichols all the way down to Pilgrim and Califf. There were some areas that were wide enough or seemed to have flat and sturdy enough shoulders to accept cars. So this is Nichols right here. This, obviously, that's with Ocean Grove. So just as you turn in on Nichols on the left-hand side, there's a flat area. Now, it becomes wet then, right there, just as it gets close to the pond. This whole area along the edge of the pond is wet. But this area here seems to be dry. As Mr. Tierney's mentioned, we'd more than likely need DM, CRMC approval to do this, but we have sufficient shoulder here. We anticipate four to six spaces right there. Someone asked, right up to the corner, it's a good question. No, we would stop in short by about 15 feet or so, so that he couldn't park right at the corner of Ocean Grove. The next area, so here's Conant, we don't see any space on Conant that's available at all for parking. Coming down to Louise, there's an area here in the middle of the block that has no, no development on it. And Louise is a little bit wider pavement than, than Conant? Not much. Okay, so I'm hearing it's a foot and a half. I did not measure myself, but, so we identified this section right along here, in the middle of the block, that could accept 10 to 12 spaces. We'll flip over to the chart, just a minute. And then down here on Pilgrim, on the north side of Pilgrim, near the end of the road, again, an area that, there are no houses that they'd be directly adjacent to, this little section right here would, would accept about eight cars. So... So again, on Nichols, we see four spaces there. To answer the question of the chairman, they'd be parallel parking spaces, not perpendicular on the north side, near the intersection of Ocean Grove. Conant shows zero. Louise, that one stretch along Louise would support about 10 cars, as I mentioned. And the one stretch on the north side of Pilgrim would support about eight cars. Green total of 20.
So we kind of have three sections where the road is generally wide, or where we would look for expansion. And then, if there's, so, and just a suggestion, well, okay, that's fine. Right, thank you.
All right, so, now, maybe about a month ago, Mr. Counselor Murray and I had a meeting with town manager Jim Tierney and community development director Mike DeLuca. When we left that meeting, we had these maps, there's 32 spots. Can you, can you ever answer to me what happened to those, those other 10 spots?
We went back, back down there, we basically overestimated. We searched the area back and forth, and talked to a couple of properties. One of the properties was obstructed, the one on, can't remember which one. But with too many spots, we came down with that number. And even this one is, it's a preliminary, too, we consult CRMC, especially over at the area on Nichols, to see if they would approve that.
So the, the entrance on Pilgrim on the left side, after the first residence, there's a pretty large area there that we designated for possible parking. Be helpful if we had these maps in the PowerPoint. I mean, what's, like... The town owns the first 10 feet of the road on each side. So what we focused on was either town property or undeveloped property. We were also looking to put parking on only one side of the road, never to do it on both sides at the same time. Again, these are just proposals. The thing that's confusing right now is that we've been, this workshop is about three or four months in the work, in the works, and there's basically nothing different than what we talked about in the summertime. We have a map that you really can't even see.
That was, that was wetland area.
Okay, so between the narrowness of the streets, between the issues that are there, we have three areas of parking that are suggested. Now, these, because they, and then due as discussion, those, those three areas, so with or without the map, I think we can all, especially people in the neighborhood can understand where those are. If it's a narrower street, it's a lot less likely that we're going to be expanding parking under it. So, does anyone else from the council want to? Does anyone from the public want to?
Jim? Mike? In that discussion, about a month ago or so, it was about, some of the paper roads, we talked the beauty of life in the paper roads, and, you know, having people pull, instead of doing parallel to the street, you'd be perpendicular to the street, but the paper road that's on Pilgrim, that's further to the west of 10 cars, they designated on the side of the road, we were reading in other street spaces by going into that paper road that's further to the east.
That was in that discussion, it's correct. But we did this without doing any modifications to existing roadways or anything else. We didn't modify the rights of way, no modifications of the street, the pavement. We went with just on the minimum we have right now.
Right, but, I was hoping that it would be discussed tonight, that we could, you know, when you're putting crushed stone on a right-of-way at the town road, or putting crushed stone on a paper road at the town roads, I don't see much of a difference. And the paper road scenario is actually safer, because it'd be further off the main road, like, you know, on Pilgrim, it'd be further away from the main road. It'd actually be out of the right-of-way if you went deeper into the paper road section.
That's the purpose of the discussion, really.
Right, so I think, I think it was another 10 spots that, that I think we could utilize and be even safer than, you know, the right-of-way scenario. I just don't understand that.
Yeah, I also, I kind of want to reiterate that point. Jim brought it up, and so does Patrick. You know, the whole point of this workshop is not to say who's right, who's wrong, who deserves to park in the neighborhood and who doesn't. It's a, it really is a safety issue. We've seen this come up time and time again. A letter that was just passed out stresses this. You can't drive down these roads with emergency vehicles if anyone's parked on the road. So, we know that people are going to park on the road, whether it's legal or not. You're going to have contractors, landscapers, surfers, fishermen, they will park there. It's just the reality. They'll do it, and they'll get a ticket. And that's how it's going to be. The town is aware that it's unsafe, and it's our responsibility to fix the issue. So, instead of, you know, us saying, "It's illegal, can't park here." What we're doing is trying to get the cars off the road. So if you get them off the road, vehicles can get through. So when we talk about on-street parking, we're really talking about off-street parking, because it's off the current street, it's in a safe area. We, what we're proposing does it in the least invasive way. Never on both sides of the road, never in front of someone's existing house, either on town property, or, you know, a town lot, or the, the paper road. What we're really looking for is kind of a compromise, because I think no parking isn't a compromise, and 80 spots isn't really a compromise. So we're looking to get something in the middle that will set a new infrastructure for this neighborhood, where it does allow people to park in the neighborhood without, you know, causing a safety issue that we currently have. So that's, that's the whole point. Again, it's not to hurt one side or another side, or even say there are defined sides, it's just to kind of fix an issue that does exist.
Well, why don't you come on, please? Yep. And just give out your name and address.
So my name is Paula Darren, and I own the property at 15 Pilgrim Avenue, and I own the property at 4 Pilgrim Avenue. So, a couple of points, and then, well, I'll start with my question. Who pays to put this paper road work done? So it's not clear right now. I can tell you I own a home across the street from it, and the lot right next to it. It's totally overgrown. So where do the funds come from to clear this paper road?
Taxpayers.
So we think that taxpayers in the town of Narragansett should cover the cost of creating a road so people can surf. Just want to be clear.
Right now, we got a $17.5 million bond.
I don't want to know that, I'm just asking a simple question, yes or no? We think the taxpayers should pay for that.
Yeah, this is a safety issue. So as officers or councilmen, we should be due diligence and provide safety.
Okay, I'm just curious as to whether we thought that that was mine. So I would also ask that, do we think the town should consider repaving the road?
That's certainly something that...
It's a safety hazard as it exists right now. It pitches down, it has drainage issues. So rather than gravel, paper roads, if we have that much surplus, maybe we should consider paving the road. I would just throw that out. But the second comment that I would make is, as somebody who made a choice, a conscious choice, to purchase land in this area and to build a home, I'll be at a second home with the intent of retiring down there, as a place that I'd bring my family, and we spend summers down there. I think that it's unfair to think that we, as the homeowners that made choices to purchase land in that area, now are being asked to compromise around the safety and serenity, candidly, of the area that we chose to purchase in. So I can speak for myself and say that we looked at many, many areas in Narragansett, and actually selected this area because it was off the beach path, and it was quiet, and there wasn't a lot of traffic, and it was safe. And they were narrow streets, and it gave that beachy, summery cottage feeling. So I think that it's important to understand, for those of us that are paying the tax dollars that are creating the surplus that you're talking about, we made conscious choices as to why we selected, where we selected to have our homes. I can also tell you, living on Pilgrim Avenue with all that free space, we could probably count the number of times somebody has ever parked this far away from the water to surf. So I think we have a real issue with the parking. I don't think it goes down as far as Pilgrim Avenue, this far down Pilgrim Avenue. Fortunately, I think it ends right around Califf. And it doesn't go down that far on Pilgrim Avenue. So I'm not sure that you really buy much, when that's what you do to solve the issue, is people don't want to walk. They park all on Califf, and they don't ever park down that far. And I can speak to that firsthand.
I believe you. I tell you what, if I was in the water, two hours...
But never finish, thank you.
No, and this isn't, so we're talking about, so you, your bias is clear. We all get your bias. I'm speaking as, as a property owner who has invested interest in the neighborhood. And maintaining, well, you don't agree, and that's fine. You're entitled to your opinion that you...
No, I agree that you're a property owner in the neighborhood. I totally agree with you.
And so, I think that the reality of what we see on a daily basis is perhaps different than the scenario that's being created. I would ask, how many tickets, parking tickets have been given out other than on Califf in, in this recent surfing season?
I don't have that information, but we can get that, and we can get the, we can also get the dates that that would have been done.
So I think it would be great to make a fact-based decision. Where's the area that we have an issue? Because apparently that's all space that people could park in. It's open, yet nobody chooses to. They choose to cram in their cars to create the parking problem. So I don't think we should look at fictitiously solving a situation that isn't an issue right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to expand.
Go ahead.
As a fourth, fourth-generation Narragansett resident, I think it's unfair for me to go down there and get a parking ticket to go fishing or surfing, or just go down there and hang around. I think that's unfair, okay? So this is, you've got public access is down there, we've got to, we're trying to figure out a way to lower the impact of traffic, and this isn't out of the question, what we're doing here. Other neighborhoods have done it. You have your apostles of the land that you purchased, and God bless you. We don't want people to park on your lawn. We don't want people to just, you know, park anywhere. We want to try to come up with a plan that works for both of us. That's what we have for the town.
So the rights of way, that we're talking about, go ahead.
Just one second, just for the point of record. When you mentioned about we have surplus money in our road funds, we don't. We've underfunded it the last six years, $400,000. So we don't have any surplus money. I understand what he says.
I never said that. I said we have $17 million... I said we have seventeen-million-dollar bond. Currently, we're using up. I anticipate a lot of...
One at a time.
Easy, Patrick. Let me speak, I'll let you speak. We don't have any surplus money to be doing anything with paper roads or anything else, just so the people know. Thank you.
So this issue did, came to our attention when there were busy surf days and there was ticketing on one of those days. That's why we're here and there had been kind of not really a lot of ticketing at that point. But one thing about these rights of ways is, and especially the one in this area, um, the, uh, those rights of ways are for people to access the water, right? They don't come with parking spaces, right? There's, there's places where you have parking associated with access to an ocean or a river. That's not what this right of way is about. So they, we can increase or decrease parking in the neighborhood, but they, these do not come with parking spaces. Go ahead.
Christine Morgan, forty-four, Kalif. Um, so I just have a question. So there are areas in Narragansett where there's public right of way to the water, but is it true that those are in fact restricted in some way? For example, town beach. Not only do you have to pay to park there, you have to pay to walk onto the beach. Um, also the state beach, you can walk onto that at any access point, but you are asked to pay to park there. So I'm just very curious why this situation, a residential neighborhood, would be a different situation? Why would we create a free parking area for residents or non-residents in an area where, as you say, it's walk-on access? Um, my second point is that in the, you know, in talking about public safety, these access points are often very treacherous. Um, there are not steps that go down to the water. It's a steep rock, um, cliff almost. So I, in the, you know, in the interest of public safety, I'm curious as to whether or not the town has a plan to increase the safety of people walking down to the water if they're going to then encourage people to visit those areas and walk down by increasing the parking. It's very unsafe to walk down. That's Stephen Mayman. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that goes to the point that, for all of the, for all of the, um, all these rights of ways are very different, right? There's some that are steep and some that are, you know, they're not allowing people. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, question, uh, Steve, do you mind coming up for a second? Thank you. Steve Dagnow is the acting, um, DPW director.
Correct.
Or will be after, I mean, to be...
Deputy.
Deputy director for now.
Congratulations.
For another couple hours. Uh, I just want to get some, um, context into the expense, you know, because I know this coming up a little bit, and how much money do we have to do this sort of thing? And I know that you work on, uh, putting out these RFPs for bids, for roadwork.
Right, something, something like this where you're looking at cutting brush, adding gravel, that would come in our regular ruling, ruling, it's budget. Uh, it's, the cost is minimal because due to the brush clearing, we have the equipment and staff to do it.
We're, we are concerned, um, with the public safety. Um, the only other thing that I was just suggesting in my write-up from the CRMC, it actually says right on the website, "No parking available for right-of-way to walk there, walk at your own risk." Roseman Park offers ample shoreline access in a safe manner and plenty of parking. It says it right on the website. Um, I want to thank you for your time and effort to read my email. Again, Jim, thank you so much for reaching out and responding, and Jesse, you responded earlier, um, in the fall. I appreciate that. Um, as a taxpayer, we like to hear from, you know, the people who are supposed to be helping us make decisions for the town. Um, I hope our voices are heard in the neighborhood. We want a solution. We want a closure to this. I really don't want to spend my Monday night keep coming back here to solve this. Um, no one is blocking right-of-ways of people to access the point. And I, I think people, if they're elderly and they can't walk with their board, Roseman is there. They have an easy access point to access the shoreline. Thank you very much for your time.
Deena, just, just one thing. What, these areas you're seeing highlighted, that's not what the town is proposing. After the last workshop, we asked the town manager to take a look at what. So I'll tell you right now, I'm not in favor of this. I don't believe that we should have a parking lot in your neighborhood. But I'm one in mind.
And then I'm, you know, I'm a little upset because, you know, out of all the places, it's like right in front of my office. They're all in front of my offices and I couldn't even pull my car out of the driveway in September. I saw that in my email.
I saw your email. This is, this is just town manager showing us options we could have a workshop and discuss.
But it's very wet. It's always wet. Oh, and I just want to make one last comment about, um, the gentleman about from the Public Works. I'm sorry, I, what was his name?
Steven.
Steve, I'm sorry, Steve. Um, I lived there pretty much, I'm over there the whole summer. No one came down my road this summer. If you can prove me wrong, I'll, I'll suggest an apology for myself. No one came down my road this summer to cut that grassy area along there. Guess who cuts it? My neighbor who's like in her seventies and eighties. She cuts it with a lawnmower. So nobody from Public Works comes and cuts the brush in front of that area. So again, if, if someone can correct me on that, I'll publicly apologize and take that back. But I was there the whole summer this summer. No one came by there to cut that. And yes, it does cost money to cut the shrubs and to maintain it because that means you have to pay someone per hour to cut the, the stuff. So yes, it does cost money and it's very expensive.
Thank you. You'll be the last speaker for the work session. I'm gonna turn it to the council, um, because, um, you're, that's fine. The, the, we ever, it's, go ahead.
Um, I'm back in town. I live at twenty-five Kalif Avenue. I live here in New Round, so I'm right at the battleground, Conant and Kalif intersection. For as long, I bought the house twenty-one years ago and have lived in it for thirteen. So I'm very familiar with surfers, with fishing persons, with other people who come sometimes from out of town to these out areas. The Boston Globe gave us glowing reports saying we were the best coastal towns in New England. And of course, I should explain to you, I've lived in Enfield, Connecticut and so got to see the ocean three times a year if I was lucky in Westerly. So having come here, it's like I died of going to heaven. And I, I thank you for this workshop because you have a massive problem on your hands, which is we had grandfathered ourselves into no parking. We set back from the road, there's not enough room for cars, service trucks that must come in to put the gas, all these things. The fire engine could be held up by a service truck, not just surfers or fishing persons. The point, I want to thank you for the meeting this evening. You see, it's nice to see democracy working in a civil, courteous, rational, reasonable way, and I thank you for that most quickly. Why am I here? Because I want people who come from out of state or out of town or the suburbs to be able to get to our ocean. It's not my ocean, it's our ocean. And I want them to be able to use that. I'm hopeful that you can find a way. You will never satisfy all of us. That's a tough place to be in, but I hope you can find to accommodate each person's needs, wants and rights to see our God-given ocean without obstruction. I trust you will have the smartest, the knowledge and the intelligence to do that and God bless you in that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And so regarding next step, we're just wait, we have a council meeting at seven-thirty, everyone. So council members, if there's a sentiment to move forward with a plan or to have another work session or provide any direction to the town manager, this would be the time to maybe weigh in on that. And then, um, council members have any thoughts on that? Do you have any, what do you want?
So, oh, so, so yeah, we have elected town manager, we have our police chief, we have our fire chief. They're all in the public safety. Public safety is the number one. Without public safety, you run into issues, problems and death. If you haven't been around it to see it, I have twenty-one years of servicing. They are the professionals right now. Whatever their recommendations are for this town, from the public safety side of this issue and making this neighborhood also a friendly neighborhood for not only the people that live there, for the people that visit, I am gonna go with their recommendation. That's their job and that's what they're a professional. So that's where I'm gonna leave. Thank you.
Do either of you have any... Anything on this side?
Had some nice aerial shot there. Got some, one or two footers rolling in there. Anyway, um, yeah, everybody seemed to be using the safety issue as a veramana for each side. Um, I think that's a good thing. I think we can find compromise like the previous speaker. And, um, certainly nothing's in cement here. Actually, it's all brushstone, so, um, I think we can work this out. I don't think it's a big deal. We have people parking there now. There'll just be parking, be closed parking, and a safer spot. That's, that's what I see. Thank you.
Jesse or Joe?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Um, I'm definitely for moving forward with this proposal. I was a little, uh, I guess surprised to see some of the other spots removed, but the twenty-two, um, I think would be a big benefit compared to what's there now, which is nothing. So I'm definitely for moving forward, uh, getting this to the agenda and having a bigger discussion and vote, um, in the future.
Joe?
I remember at the beginning, Jim, you read about the right of way and what the right of way does. It offers access to our water. It does not access, it does not provide parking. There's nothing in the right of way that says parking. Um, we have two, we've done a great job. Thank you for going and meeting with Bonview. We have two areas where, where people can park. I agree with Rick and with Jesse about the public safety, that's a big thing, but this is a neighborhood. It's, we're, we're not responsible nor is the neighborhood should they be, should they have to have additional parking spots put in for the convenience of people who don't want to have a little bit more, they're, they'll have a trip down to, uh, access to the water. So again, it's public safety. The right of way only says that the right of way is given. It sounds like from everyone here that no one's ever been denied access to the water. But the right of way, according to Coastal Resources, does not also extend the right for parking.
So Jim, there have been two, um, two different kind of approaches. I mean, look back at the other work session where, if I recall, it was, there was a discussion of six parking spots. This is a discussion about eighteen. So, um, if you come back, um, you know, if you have something to come back with in terms of an agenda, I'm probably gonna tweak this, I'm assuming, based on what we've heard tonight. And then we'd have to make sure everyone's informed of when that's on. Does that make sense?
We'd have to revisit the scene down there, have CRMC look at the potential spots that we're looking at and the effective property owners, and then we can move forward.
All right, everyone, so thank you. That's gonna conclude the work session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and, um...